Sir. The Durelli. By my name is the flag of the United States of America. And as soon as we're recalling the history which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maybe we'll have a. We're. Commissioner lead the meeting today. Morning, everybody. Thanks for being here. I can see our folks from across the pond. Housekeeping note, this meeting is being recorded, so we typically start with introductions. Mr. Moore, would you please start?
I'm important, IT director.
Nancy Jager, Director of El County Children's.
Ellen Williams, Executive Director of Angel Flight East.
Marilyn Seaco, the Courier Express and the Daily.
My name's Delaney Rowan. I am John Chilwell, Rick Brown.
I'm Rick Brown, El County Solicitor.
Rick Bauer, Commissioner.
Brett Slacker, Commissioner.
Morning, Matt. Susan Berry, Commissioner.
Carrie Williamson, Deputy Chief Clerk.
Emily Anders, Office Administrator.
Robin Everett, Assistant Director of Domestic Relations.
Jess Anderson, Director of Domestic Relations.
Liam Cogback, District Court Administrator.
Jason Bone, Assistant Chief, El County Division.
I'd like to make a note that clerk Pat Strub is abused today. So our Deputy Chief Clerk is here in this step. So we do have a couple, a few special guests here, so that's great. So we're going to give you a chance to speak later in the meeting, but for now, we have Rowan. Rowan Delaney.
Reverse.
Delaney Rowan. My grandson just moved here from California and his best friend is a little tiny row.
I have a grandson, Rowan.
So Delaney, welcome. So you want to tell us a little bit about yourself, please?
Yeah, sure. I am in my undergraduate right now at State Bonaventure University. I'll be going into my junior year here on the 31st. I'm your John Chilwell, Rick Brown, hopefully to be a lawyer. My degree right now is Philosophy, Law, Politics with a minor in Business Administration. Oh, school after that? Great. Well, thank you so much.
Why are you here?
Good luck.
Yeah.
Philosophy and politics, interesting.
I think we should talk about it.
We might do that. So my fellow commissioners, we have agenda here before us for any changes, additions to the agenda.
I'll motion to make one minor change that had a presentation.
Presentation.
Ellen Williams from Angel Flight East. With that change, I would second that motion.
Give a motion and second. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Thank you. So we have made that addition, so we'll put you on in a few moments. We also have copy of the minutes of August 7th, 2025, Commissioners' Meeting. For any changes, edits, comments, questions on those. We should dispense with reading of minutes. I think we read them.
It's still with us, too.
Guys are troublemakers. Hey, your morning. That's why I brought this.
Motion to approve our amended August 7th Commissioner's meeting.
Thank you. Motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Thank you. So next up, we have Ms. Ellen Williams here from Angel Flight East. So welcome. We were contacted by Jen Dipold, I think, and made the introduction. And then Ellen came in this week and presented to my fellow commissioners. I wasn't able to attend, but they said it was really fascinating. So we're glad you're here today to tell us a little bit about Angel Flight. I am thrilled to be here. I actually had lunch with Jen yesterday, and I told her that I was presenting this morning, so she was very happy about that. So I am Ellen Williams, Executive Director for Angel Flight East. Angel Flight East is a nonprofit that provides free air transportation for children and adults who need medical treatment far from home. And we're able to do that through a network of private pilots who use their own aircraft and assume all the expenses. So it's their aircraft, their fuel, and their time. So we serve as the connector between the pilots that offer the service and the people that need the transportation. We cover 14 states, Ohio to Virginia to Maine. So we are one of more than 60 charitable aviation organizations around the country. Most provide the sort of service that I, that Angel Flight East does, but there are some that do pet rescue, STEM flights to encourage young people to get involved in STEM careers, aviation and beyond, environmental. So there's a whole range of these kinds of organizations. And we are part of what's called the Air Care Alliance. So we're, we are independent, but there are the area that, that we have in common is the FAA. So the FAA dictates the pilot requirements, that sort of thing. But this gives us an opportunity that the organizations to get to know one another, to work together. So we, we have an annual conference every year. This year was in Nashville, which was kind of fun. It was wild.
Kind of place.
It was.
You need a commissioner with you the next time you go. It means one.
So this is our founder, Harry Morales. Harry wanted to help after Hurricane Andrew in 1992 in Florida. He contacted the Red Cross, said, I'm a general aviation pilot with an aircraft. If there's anything I can do to support recovery missions, whether it's bringing volunteers in, bringing supplies in, in the wake of a disaster. Large aircraft can't get in quite often. The roads are impassable. And so he, he put forward his, his, his volunteer efforts. Now, he didn't actually wind up doing that, but during the course of his conversations, he was encouraged to found Angel Flight in Pennsylvania. There wasn't one. So he began that process, gathered friends of his, some pilots, not all. And Angel Flight East was founded at the very end of 1992, and our first flights were in 1993. There were 17. And at that time, they were coordinating flights through beepers. So you can just imagine that. That was, that was crazy, too. So this is how our process works. When somebody needs a flight, they can either call our office and we will walk them through the steps, or you can actually request a flight on our website. So at angelflighteast.org, one of the first things you'll see is Request a Flight, and that will take you through, that will take you through the process. When you are talking to our flight coordinator, if that's the way that that request comes in, he'll ask three questions. One is, are you or the person you're calling about ambulatory? Can they get on and off a small plane under their own power? Sometimes that means stepping up on the wing of the aircraft to get in. Most of our volunteer pilots have a four or a six-seat aircraft. Some have larger ones. We have one or two that have a small jet, which is really kind of nice, but they're few and far between. They, their doctor has to certify that it's safe for that person to fly in a small, non-pressurized aircraft. And that paperwork actually will go directly to the doctor to, we'll get that, we'll get that approval. The last thing that we ask for is a verification of need. And in the past, it was verification of financial need. We got away from that for a number of reasons. One, think about somebody who has a compromised immune system. Even if they can afford to fly, they shouldn't be at a big airport. They shouldn't be on a, on a plane surrounded by hundreds of other people. There are situations where people might have a very healthy income, but any kind of a medical situation can quickly wipe out those kinds of resources. So when we ask for verification of need, it's from the third party. Explain why would it be a hardship for that person to get to either the treatment that they need or to get to the destination that they're going to? And that can be any number of things. Maybe they have to go back and forth for treatment. Maybe it's just a great distance and to travel at, maybe they're sick and they just can't, they cannot make that drive. So that comes from a third party. It could be a doctor, it could be an employer, social worker, as long as it's somebody that's not the person who's requesting the flight or their immediate family. Once that, once that happens, once we get, once we get that paperwork back, then we can schedule the flight. And what we use is a web-based scheduling platform. So every flight request that comes in gets posted. All of our 450-plus pilots have a log and then a passport. So they can go on at any time, see the upcoming flights, and if it fits their schedule and it's something that, and, and in their flight path, then they would request that flight. Once that step has been taken, then our flight coordinator, David, will contact the, the patient, the passenger, and they would agree on the airport where they would meet. So think of airports like St. Mary's, Dubois, Lawrence Clearfield. Those are the types of airports that we, for the most part, fly in. Occasionally, we'll go into Logan in Boston because of proximity to the, to the hospitals. But for the most part, it's these smaller airports. The pilot will contact the passenger a day or two before, introduce him or herself. They, I'm John. I'll be flying you tomorrow. We're meeting such and such time at that airport. It just helps with the ease, especially for somebody who's not flown in a small airplane. It's kind of nice to get that reassurance. These are not emergency flights. Our pilots are all volunteer. So our real sweet spot are for situations where people know when their appointment is, particularly if they're, the treatments are on an ongoing basis. I mean, they can, we can put them into our system as far out as, as soon as necessary. They also know, passengers know that if, if 24 hours before, if the weather's bad and they don't feel it's safe to fly, our, our passengers know that they have to have a Plan B. Either they can reschedule an appointment, or they can get themselves to where they need to go that time. But safety is paramount. That's, that's first and foremost. No cost. And this is probably the area or the situation where it seems too good to be true. And I was just telling Nancy that when I first started at Angel Flight in 2013, I was talking to a woman on the phone, and she said, I want you to look me in the eye and tell me that it's free. All right. So I met her at an Olive Garden on the outskirts of Philadelphia, and I said, it's free. But since free, there will never be a charge. We try to make this as easy as possible for, for our passengers. We answer the phone. It's not a menu of, it's not a menu of options. As you'll get David, you'll get me, you'll get somebody on the phone. We're not there 24/7, but we'll return a call within 24 hours. So this little girl, Emma, she lived in Columbus, Columbus, Georgia, needed to get to Children's Hospital. And we found out that her, they were going to have to be in Philadelphia for eight months. And so one of the challenges they had is the father, the dad was going to be home in Georgia working, and wouldn't see his wife and his daughter for, for that length of time, for two months. So we were able to fly him back and forth to visit his family. So Christie lives, lives actually not far from our office in Montgomery County, Pennsylvania. Diagnosed with stage four colon cancer, two teenage daughters, has been to a couple of different places trying to seek the treatment that she needed. And originally was referred to Dana Farber Cancer Institute in Boston. The trial didn't work for her, and so she was able to find a clinical trial at Johns Hopkins. So because Hopkins is not that far from us, we are able to fly her same day, which is not what we most, we don't do that most often. But we'll get, when she has morning, morning treatments, we'll fly her. She gets to Hopkins, and then she's home in time for when her daughters get home from school. This little girl, Asa, they, the family lives in Erie, Pennsylvania. She was diagnosed with retinoblastoma, and Children's Hospital of Philadelphia has the top, the top specialist for that, for that condition. So we've been flying her for, for four years. What we've done with that family, the whole family needs to fly together. There's nobody who can help with childcare or anything else. Asa is a twin. So we fly Asa, her twin, her sister, her mom, and her dad. But the father doesn't live, she lives in a different state. So we're, we're coordinating separate flights for that family to get to Philadelphia. So 2018, we're a small staff. We've got four full-time people and one part-time, covering 14 states, but how do we do that? How do we do that effectively? So we decided to focus on seven states with large rural populations and really dive into the rural health world, going to rural health conferences, coming, visiting, visiting communities like yours, trying to understand, to learn, how can, how can a service like this support communities that don't necessarily have access to higher-level treatments that might be needed? One of my, one of our staff, Jess Ames, who you'll see later on, is our Director of Outreach and Events, and she kind, she manages this, this whole effort, really has, really learned more about the rural health, rural health world. So we make a large effort to partner with other organizations. There's so many nonprofits that are set up to support people, maybe with a particular condition, or they support people with cancer, but they can't afford their mortgage, or their rent, or there's food insecurity, all kinds of things. Those bills don't go away simply because you're dealing with a medical issue. So we are, we are participants in a number of nonprofit roundtable groups, so we can share resources and we can help one another. Actually, these, these two are flying me home on Sunday. Some of the passengers call them Burton Ernie because they bicker. Pilot qualification. So obviously, you want highly skilled pilots. So it's a minimum three hours of flight time. Most have far more than that. We have a few that are actually commercial pilots as well. One was a UPS pilot, captains of some of the, some of the airlines. But flying is their passion, so they do this as their, as their volunteer work. Instrument rating, that means if you're, you know, say, if it's a cloudy day or whatever, they can fly from the instrument panel, but the visibility isn't as sharp as it needs to be. And they have to have, own or have access to a plane. So there are flying clubs. There are people with partnerships in aircraft, so there's all kinds of, of options. We actually have a couple of pilots whose companies have aircraft, and that company will allow them to do Angel flights with the company plane. And so you tend to have a larger aircraft in that situation, so we may be able to go further. The minimum flight for us is 100 miles. We can be, we can be flexible with that. If it's, if it's travel, it might, maybe it's not 100 miles, but it's a difficult terrain. So we have that flexibility, and we can do up to 1,000 miles. A flight that's, a flight that's 1,000 miles will most likely require three planes. So you'd have A to B, B to C, and whatever. Whatever I did there. But you follow me. So yeah. So I'd like to play this video. They can tell the story better than I can. Okay, so that's our information, how you can, how you can contact us. Are there any questions?
Could you just briefly touch on compassion flights, too?
Sure. Yes. So compassion, there are three areas of service that we have. So the patient flies are what we do the most. Secondly, are the disaster, disaster response, which we still do, although not, I mean, not every day, because thankfully, it's not every day. During COVID, we were flying donated PPE supplies to rural communities, rural hospitals. I was very able to help. We can have other people in the aircraft. And then the third are compassion flights, and that is a very broad area. So in the, in an instance where somebody has a family member who needs help, for, for whatever reason, there's a person who lives at a distance and they can't get there. But we can, we can provide that flight. So it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be the patient. We have a family from Buffalo, New York. The mom, the baby had a condition where they knew that the baby was going to have to be delivered at Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, and that he would be there probably for a year. And so the question was, the father was a disabled vet. He wasn't working. His wife, the mom, was, we had the, the job and the insurance. So after she had used all of her, her leave, the question was, how am I going to get back and forth? So that's where we were able to step in. So we would fly Brenda every Wednesday from Buffalo to Philadelphia, and then on Sunday from Philadelphia back home, so she could meet the requirements of her job. One of my favorite stories is we had a, I had a call from a state trooper in Massachusetts, and his father had been one of 11 children, and his father passed away, and there was one survivor, surviving sibling who had lived in Western Pennsylvania. And Leo was well into his 80s and wasn't going to be able to navigate the, the commercial airports on his own, and asked if perhaps we could fly him so he could go to his brother's funeral, be with the family. And we were able to do that, but during our conversations with him, we learned that he had served on the USS Iowa with FDR. And so he was on that ship, and his, on his bucket list was to go to Hyde Park and to see that museum. So the pilot who was flying him back brought him there. So there's all kinds of, of situations that a compassionate flight might fit. And there's one, this one, it's, this is sad. There's a, there's a nonprofit in Philadelphia called Final Farewell, and the couple who runs it are funeral directors. So if a child passes away in Philadelphia and the family can't afford the funeral, Final Farewell steps in and takes care of it. Well, I had known one of the founders, and we were Girl Scout leaders together. So she called me when I got to Angel Flight. She told me about a young couple from Chicago, high-risk pregnancy. The babies had to be born, they were twins, had to be born at Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, but they were stillborn. And so she, Trish asked me, she said, they're going to have to drive back with their babies, and can, can you help? And I said, I have no idea. So I called our attorney. He said, as long as all the paperwork is in place, there's no reason why not. And then the second question would, was, would a pilot take that flight? I had six pilots in 10 minutes say they would take that flight. So we've done a number of those, sadly, but it happens. But just to have that, to have that extra resource, or to have that resource really, really does make a difference. One quick, a quick story. There was a young woman, Brianna, who, the situation she had with her esophagus, I don't know if she didn't have one or it was so severely damaged. She needed to go to, she lived in New Jersey, needed to go to Boston. And in fact, her condition was a story on, I think it was Grey's Anatomy, but it was, it was one of those, one of those medical shows, and so it was like how they could build her a new one. We haven't flown Brianna. It's been at least 10 years. She is still in touch with her pilot, who's from Williamsport. And Michael actually flew a mission last week, and he said, they still exchange letters. Brianna will let her, let him know how she's doing. So, so anyway, lots of stories like that. Yes.
Just one more thing. I think when we talked, the other part of this for us to understand is that we're not meeting a minimum threshold. We have a lot of great stories up there, but, you know, the concern I had for you was, oh, my goodness, I don't want, maybe I, maybe I still could drive this or whatever.
Right.
Or find a way to get there. And I don't want to take a pilot away from somebody else whose condition might be even worse.
Right.
And you assured us, you got to get over that mental hurdle, that we have the availability of pilots, that you're not going to be.
That's right.
Stealing one from somebody else or anything like that.
That's right. And I'm glad you brought that up, because that's really important. And we can't address it unless somebody tells us that's their hesitation. But there really isn't. There, there is just, it's, it's so rare that we can't fill a flight. But if we, those other partner organizations that I mentioned also have volunteer pilots, and that ecosystem kicks into gear to, to fill those flights. So we try to reassure people, you're not, you're not taking it from somebody else. You have people say, I haven't maxed out my credit cards yet, so maybe I shouldn't. And we just want to assure people, you're not taking it from anybody. You're not, not qualified enough. There was qualifications that I talked about at the beginning, those three things, those are the qualifications. Thank you. Thanks for bringing that up. Anything else? Thank you so much. It was an honor and a privilege to be here. Thank you.
It's a tremendous story and a tremendous service.
We should have brought kitchen tour.
Oh, really?
Lump in my throat.
That's great. And thank you.
You can hang out with us for the rest of the meeting, but it will not be nearly as packed.
You're going to, we're going to chat.
Oh, that's great. Okay, thank you again, Ellen. Okay, moving along. We have no resolutions, no old business. Excuse me, under new business number one, we have a request from Domestic Relations for the 2025 to 2030 title for the cooperative agreement.
for the cooperative renewal agreement between the County of Elk Court and the Bureau of Child Support Enforcement, sending forth regulations that the Domestic Relations Section must adhere to in order to meet eligibility for Title IVD. Am I saying that correctly? Funding, thank you. So today we have our district court administrator, Lee, come back, and several folks from our domestic relations. Someone like to give us a little background, please?
Sure. So every five years, the county, the court, and the Bureau of Child Support Enforcement enter into this cooperative agreement. And it sets forth, as, as you stated, the regulations, requirements that Domestic Relations Section and the county and court must adhere to in order to remain eligible for the Title IVD funding. Title IVD funding is federal funding that is passed on to the counties through the Bureau of Child Support Enforcement in Pennsylvania. And generally speaking, it allows the Domestic Relations Section to have 66% of their operating costs reimbursed. So the county is then responsible for the 34% of unreimbursed expenses. However, to maintain eligibility for that 66% reimbursement, uh, we have to adhere and agree to adhere to the regulations. Every five years, it's renegotiated, the County Commissioners Association, uh, the Administrative Office of the Department of Police, and the Bureau of Child Support Enforcement sit down and negotiate the terms. Frankly, they don't change much. It's tweaking, you know, a change in technology, or this requirement isn't required anymore because we don't do that practice anymore. Things like that. So there isn't anything significant or substantive in this renewal contract. However, our current contract expires at the end of September, and so we are just in that renewal phase so that we can have that in place and continue to receive reimbursements and reimburse.
Thank you. So it's time. Any questions, gentlemen? Anything else? Yeah, look for a motion that we approve, the request from Domestic Relations.
Second.
They have motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leah. Next, new business number two, we have a request from our Children's New Services slash, uh, Junior Juvenile Probation Office to approve, uh, fiscal year 26, 27 need-based budget between the County of Elk and Pennsylvania Department of Payment Services. So we all have Nancy Baker here. Nancy, anything for you?
Go through this every year. Thank you. Good morning. Thanks for having me. Uh, so, uh, that's balls, here it is. Everyone will want to see it. Juvenile Operation of Children's Youth. Uh, we have our crystal ball and tell you what's gonna happen in 26, 27. And I go to commissioners every year requesting a county share of what year request. There is a 14.5 increase year, from this year to 26, 27. A lot of those costs are providers, so we have Dickinson, we have CAFSI, we have Justice Works, we have drug and alcohol. A variety of programs that are available to youth and families in Elk County. And these programs are to provide stability and mental health services. And a lot is to really geared towards child abuse prevention, things like that. So this year, like I said, there was a little bit of an increase, um, and a lot of the providers are seeing insurance rates are going up, there's liability issues, not issues, but costs are going up. So that is why some of these, some of these, it goes to 0.4%, is roughly the, the increase that we're seeing with providers. You'll see that later on in the agenda. Um, so there's a county match to all of, all of the programs, and they're typically 5 to 20% county match, and the rest are state funds or federal funds. Just do a lot, I think that's.
That's great. And, uh, for year 26, 27, the county, um, match or share is like $117,000. So, correct? So the rest is, please. Um, that's all we need to come up with. So, thank you. Any questions?
No, I mean, like we do every year at the cost, but if we don't make an investment with this now, it'll cost even more for us in the future.
And that's, that's a huge thing when we try to put as much prevention or least restrictive avenues in place first. As us, as, you know, it takes a village, and that's not just people around this table, but certainly Elk County as a whole, and, um, doing our part. So, I mean, that's taxpayer money as well, and, um, like I said, it takes, it takes the village sometimes. And it's better to have these costs now, instead of paying on the backside where it could be placement costs, which are exorbitantly higher.
Sure. Right. So every year, we go through the exercise with Nancy and her office on the, on the budget, and it's, I think it would be difficult to project what you're going to be doing a year and a half from now, but, you know, whatever. So, okay, thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
I'm looking for a motion. But, Jason?
I have noise, but nothing to say, I'm moving. Appreciate the opportunity, though.
You're welcome to speak.
I'm good, thank you.
And we work closely, like I said, with, with obviously Juvenile Operation. Um, we pay those bills, so we work hand in hand with, with those as well.
Great, thank you. Okay, look for a motion to approve the requests.
Second.
Motion to second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you. New business number three, we, we have a request from Alcohol and Drug Services. They provided an exception letter request. Um, they're asking that a current board member, Ms. Margaret Johnson, continue to serve on the Board of Directors without taking the one-year hiatus as required by the statute. The statute allows for an exception request. ADS has provided the letter requesting, uh, that Ms. Johnson stay on the board. But, uh, any questions? They state that she has served, um, six years already, and she is an extremely active member of the board, serving on committees and attending many events. She's a tireless advocate for what we do here at ADS. Her input and guidance has been invaluable to our agency. Please consider us allowing to forego the one-year hiatus from the board and allow her to continue to serve. So sincere request from ADS. Look for a motion to approve that.
Second.
We have motion to second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries, thank you. New business number four, we have a request from Johnsonboro, um, to receive their allocation of county liquid fuel tax funds in the amount of $7,000. They will be purchasing winter rock salt. Again, we receive this liquid fuels, um, funding every year, and it's divided equally between our municipalities. Municipalities have to apply PENDOT for their, uh, projects, get it approved by PENDOT, then we receive the PENDOT approved application, and, uh, we give it the final approval. So look for a motion to approve that.
I'll move. Second.
They have motion to second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Thank you. New business number five, we have a request from Veterans Affairs for approval of benefits for four veteran burials, one widow burial, and four veteran headstones. Uh, these have become a regular feature in our commissioner meetings. We have a very active Veterans Affairs Office who is doing their great due diligence, keeping up with all these requests. So look for a motion to approve these.
I'll move.
There's a motion, I'll second that, since please a Mary is sleeping, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have a request from Children's New Services for renewal contracts for grants with Dickinson Center Incorporated from July 1, 25 through June 30, 2026. So we have it's number six, number seven is also for Dickinson Center.
Six is the grant, seven is the regular contracts.
Thank you, Emily. So, uh, new business number six, it's renewal contracts for grants to Dickinson Center. Six A is Parents' Teachers Program Grant in the amount of $319,026, 4% increase. And, uh, six B is Triple P, free of, in the amount of $100,000, $1052, a 4% increase. Nancy, do you have anything quick about those?
No, just the programs I just touched briefly, briefly, uh, prior, one of our big parenting, parents' teachers, parent educator program, um, available for all families, for Elk County.
Push it to.
Push it to approve.
Second.
And the second, all those in favor, approving, um, new business item number six, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Business number seven, request from CYS for renewal contracts with Dickinson Center, uh, July 1, 25 through June 30, 26. Item A is a Family Resource Network for $18,380 and 83% increase. And Nancy, I know there's a short.
Very short, we're seeing that increase is certainly alarming, that's scary to see. However, this is a collaborative board, Family Resource Network has been around since 1994 in Elk County. Stakeholders throughout the county are part of that, recently just became a Communities That Care Board, um, which is known for the epicenter, so people around that table, these providers are able to give grants and letters of support, um, because it's a communities that care. They call it CTC Board now. Uh, so basically, the increase is for part of that, and the tools, if you will. You need to have a mobilizer, run these meetings, um, and the Bushes and the departments and the board secretary. So the increase you're seeing, um, normally it's $10,000, that's been paid for by children who need since 2006. That increase is covering those salaries. Uh, so where that 83% is coming in, it's really $6,704 will be covered by the state, and $1,676 will be covered by the county. Um, so yes, it's an 83%, but it's, the county match is only 20% of that.
Thank you.
Any of that looks expensive.
Definitely. Um, and then seven B is a comprehensive psycho-social evaluations for $200 per evaluation with no increase. And who's that with? That is with?
Um, that's typically what they have sent, so when court orders psych evaluations for parents.
Great. So look for a motion to approve, um, new business seven A and B.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. There's all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. New business number eight, Nancy is our most frequently presenter at our meetings. It's another, but Children's New Services for renewal contracts, July 1, 25 through June 30, 26. New business eight A is Community Specialist Corporations for Residential Placement with a 3 to 4% increase. Uh, eight B is Summit School Incorporated for Residential Placement with 3, 3, 3 and 1/2 to 5% increase. And C is Pensrun New Services for Group Home placements with the 7.5% increase. Again, these are, um, service providers that we keep in our stable. We may or may not use them all, but we have to have an annual contract. Is that correct?
How, how do you keep track of all this?
There's a lot. There's a lot. So these are, I mean, unfortunately, sometimes when these, uh, placements, like, or our budget and what service providers, we've done all we can, sometimes children, uh, whether it's delinquent or dependent children need a pad of home placement. These are some of the places that we would utilize. And we've used them for years. Pensrun is nice because it's local, I understand, it's a 7.5 increase. That's right in DuBois, so that's over the closer typically elaborate places, placements are two to two and a half hours away. Um, so we try to stay local when we can, but sometimes it's hard with, with delinquent youth. Um, Summit is probably one of our top ones we use. So, like I said, a least restrictive avenue is always utilized first, but sometimes out of home care is, is necessary.
Great, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Here and now, look for a motion to approve new business item eight, A, B, and C.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Now we have a second, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Nancy. Now, new business number nine, request from Penn State Extension, Elk County 4H, for use of our kitchen in the, here in the annex building from September 2nd, 2025 through June 1, 2026, for after-school program on Mondays and Tuesdays. They're going to have cooking, cooking school, cooking lessons, whatever. They have provided a certificate of insurance. This has been done in the past. Uh, we've allowed certain organizations to use our, our building facilities, especially the 4H, they've been a regular here. Anything to add? I know, Emily, you had direct interaction with them.
Yeah.
Anything else?
She just said she's getting the sign-ups from the kids and seeing how many she's gonna get. She may end up coming into this conference room too, for some of them. Um, she was also told that on the days that we are closed, especially elections night, that she would not be able to.
Right, there will be some, some, um, time periods when the kid, they will not be allowed access to.
Right, but she stated she had a couple of places she could probably use as backups.
Right. Okay, thanks, Emily. Any other questions, comments? Look for a motion to request new business number nine.
Second.
Second. They have motion to second, thank you, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Under correspondence, we have none. Under good of the county, we welcome and encourage the public to attend our meetings. Um, America 250 PA update. Our Liberty Bell will be appearing in the, uh, Bennett's Valley Labor Day Parade, and, uh, County of Elk was selected by the state, um, America 250 PA group. They paid for a documentary. Our bell program was so unique, they paid, they provided funding for a documentary, um, as the bell was going through the schools, and we will have a chance to, to view the first draft of the documentary next, next week. So it's kind of exciting. We probably, we're thinking of playing the documentary, uh, at the meeting where we unveil the veil, and dedicate it for
We have a video.
Okay, maybe you can work on that then.
Listen to your system. I want to see more video.
Right. I think that's all right now on America 250 PA. Although we do have our grant round open, uh, we're looking for any organization, any group, any individuals that would like to host a public, um, patriotic celebration, game contest, anything. We're, we have a grant round open right now, uh, we'll be giving up to $500 for those events, and the last, excuse me, date for that is October 11th, to get your applications in. So Marilyn, we want to promote those A250 PA grants. Um, we also, right now, have our Act 13 grant application round open. These are Act 13 funds, we have a mini-grant program. Many years ago, about 12 years ago, um, Board of Commissioners set up this grant program. They pride for, uh, receiving applications twice a year. So we're in our fall round right now, and we always get good participation in that. This year, we're giving out two rounds of $75,000 each. So it's, it's funds that go right back into the community, and we do a lot of good with that. I'd like to make a special note, uh, Jake Mercer, who's been a reporter in the county, is leaving, so we're wishing him the best. We're gonna miss seeing him around. He is a great, friendly, um, always available.
I, I sent him a copy of the agenda, pointing out that he was on there, and his message is, "Tell them all I said hello, and I am humbled by their kind word."
Oh, it's so Jake, so.
Big shoes to fill.
Yeah, definitely.
I'm picking up some of his.
Great young man to work with, yeah. So you're taking on more work, Marilyn. See what we're gonna have to say about you when you leave. I'll have a whole paragraph here, I think. But we do wish Jake the best. Next, please continue to pray for our military personnel, our families and our children, their teachers, especially since Dave's first day of school at St. Mary's. I think Ridgeway may have started also. Um, all elected officials, a piece in the world. Questions from the press?
None today.
You, questions, comments from taxpayers? Look for a motion to adjourn? Meeting adjourned. Our next meeting will be at 10:00 AM on September 4th, 9/25, right here in this very room.